I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, October 6th at 6:00 PM at Carabelle City Hall and I'll ask Commissioner Allen to please say a prayer.
God, Father in heaven, we come to you again this time to ask you your blessings on our being tonight. We may do it wisely and prudently for the things that come before us. We're thankful, Father, for those citizens of this city that are concerned and their input and helping us in making our decision, their suggestions and opportunities. We ask you again to be with those in our state that are facing the weather situation, to protect those and especially those that are having difficulty and unable to evacuate. We ask you to be with us tonight in this meeting and thank you for this wonderful city and this state. Pray again.
I pledge to the flag now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God and indivisible, for the liberty and justice of all.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Okay, we have on the consent agenda our September 8th, 2016 minutes and the attorney's invoices that everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, a second by Commissioner Massey. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. And then, next on the agenda is public comment and I understand we have Ms. Joan Maye from the Lantern Fest to give us a little review of what's going to happen on October the 22nd.
It seems silly to bring a lantern not into darkness because it does look pretty bleak. The microphone, yeah, please. This lantern can't really be seen to get through.
Now it's on? Now we're talking. All right. Anyway, this lantern will be lit up on the night of Lantern Fest along with a ton of other original creations. This is just one I made out of paper mache, but we had a series of lantern-making workshops that the community really supported. This is going into the eighth year of Lantern Fest. We've been doing it since 2009, no, seventh year. And it's growing and we're, you know, real happy that it is, that we're getting more and more support. The Tourist Development Council has always funded our advertising and I am happy to say that we are resurrecting a play called 1766, The Shipwreck on Dog Island, which was a famous shipwreck story of our area. We're lucky to have one, you know, that is proven. And Don Dennig is a local writer who has taken it and made it into a play script and we're happy to have Commissioner Cal Allen as our narrator. He used to be a disc jockey, so he's got the voice. And this will be happening on Saturday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. We always have candle dipping and we're going to have a fellow to talk about beekeeping because the RV park next door, the RV, our big Carabelle RV park is, their corporation is launching a campaign to help save the bees and we are planning on having a flow hive. It's like if you all had ant farms when you were kids, it's a hive where you can actually see the bees. And so, we're just going to start, you know, talking about that. Beekeeping is becoming very popular in the North Florida regions. So, we'll have that as a presenter. And we'll have the astronomers, Tallahassee Astronomy Club, will be down at the beach pavilions, the beach access, until 10:30 at night. And anyone can come down there for free and look through their really high-powered telescopes at Saturn and the planets and they certainly love to tell you about it. And then, every year, we have a wonderful relationship with the Tallahassee Community College Dance Company. They've been coming for years and they dance, they wear black and they have all these incredible glow-in-the-dark things that they manipulate and they're all modern dancers and we're very happy to have them come pro bono as we're part of their community outreach for the college. So, this is a pretty wonderful event that really incorporates a ton of people and we always pick one restaurant from our area each year to cater. This year it will be Two Brothers. Sandra will be bringing some good gumbo down there. And so, we'll have the play and candle dipping and the dancers and you can climb the tower at night and our museum will be open and we hope that you commissioners will come down and join the party. It is actually the birthday of the lighthouse. It'll be 121 years old and we're sure happy to keep that landmark going and thank you for all your support for helping us keep the park and the lighthouse alive and well. And I'd like to give you each two of these in hopes that you would give one to a friend.
Thank you very much. And that's October 22nd, Saturday. What is the time?
6:00 to 10:00.
Okay, and then the play is starting at 8:00?
The play starts at 8:00 and the dancers are at 9:00.
Play is at 8:00 and the dancers at 9:00 PM at the Carabelle Crooked River Lighthouse. Is there any more public comment? Any further public comment? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Walden, do you have a report? Okay. Commissioner Matthews?
I have another.
Commissioner Massey?
I don't have anything except that everything's running okay.
All right, very good. Commissioner Allen?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Well, I always have a report, but I have a short one. This board now has been seated, this particular board has been seated a year, this meeting. We had our first meeting a year ago and that's when we got our Sands Park award. We got the big sign, $1,000 check. We want that Sands Park to move forward now in those upgrades. But I had a report prepared and I was going to explain about all the projects and the progress the city's made over the past year, but with our fellow Floridians and neighbors along the Space Coast preparing for the worst, it just didn't seem appropriate to brag about our accomplishments at this time. So, but I, we're hoping for the best outcome for all those folks on the East Coast. They're pouring over here, they're looking for everywhere to park RVs. The RV parks in Panama City are overflowing, our parks are here full now and the TDC is gathering up a list of flat locations where they can park like our City Park Lot in Kendrick, Ballfield Parking Lot, the American Legion, so we'll have that posted, you know, for folks to see and we hope they enjoy themselves while they're here at this time. But I want to follow up on my report from last month regarding the three derelict vessels in the Carabelle River being included on the county's bid list for a quote on the cost to remove those vessels. Hondo Enterprises quoted on the 19 derelict vessels that were throughout Franklin County and the total quote on all those vessels was $438,208. And they were itemized per vessel and the cost to remove the three sunken boats in the Carabelle River was $25,175 to remove the sailboat that's sunk next to a southern pier on the Tilly Miller Bridge. $42,274 to remove the Anthony Diane, that's $42,274. I see someone taking notes. And then, to remove the Miss Carabelle was $37,174. So, that's some good information for us to know, you know, when we start moving forward.
We can't make them move them? They, they're not made to move them?
Well, I-
I know we paid for, I mean, we got grants for the last one.
No, we've never received a grant, I don't believe, to remove the derelict vessel.
I wouldn't know, probably have.
And Miss Carabelle's under the Anthony Diane, so I don't know how it works, but I would think that Anthony Diane would have to come up first to get Miss Carabelle out. I understand that, you know, that Anthony Diane and Miss Carabelle are at private docks and do they have a permit to be there and, you know, there's all kinds of permitting that we need to be done to have those removed. But there is FWC funding to remove some boats in Franklin County, but I don't think it's going to fund all $438,000 worth. So, we can just move forward. And they did talk, I talked to a gentleman, Mark Currington, county planner, who says that what, these 19 vessels that are not removed, we're going to try to get some of them removed with Restore Act funding. So, we'll just have to move forward with that as best we can. And then, I want to also report that during our Water and Sewer Department meeting, we have a department meeting once a month, representatives from a utility service company came, gave us a PowerPoint presentation. They're the same people who would maintain the Carabelle's five water towers and they want to do, they had a proposal to maintain our four wells, two 10-inch wells in north of Carabelle, there by DOC and Patton Park, and then the two 10-inch wells in Lanar. They offered to include providing the initial rehab and installation of maintenance equipment on each well. They would repair, replace the pumps and motors as needed. They would continue future rehab at no additional cost, provide annual cleaning and performance testing of all wells and provide emergency call-out services as needed at no additional cost. The quote was $6,500 per well annually and they required a 10-year contract. So, we asked them to come back to us with individual quotes for the two wells in north Carabelle. The Lanar wells right now are operating just beautifully, they're in good shape and they provide high-quality raw water at this point. So, we just want to concentrate on the two wells north of Carabelle. And then Courtney and I met with Captain Wood and Ms. Caitlin Goud, they're here tonight on last Thursday, and also Lieutenant Pex to discuss FWCC cost-sharing proposal to provide the bear-resistant, resistant containers and garbage containers. And after we talked, I requested, I had already requested to be on the agenda, but after they gave their presentation, we talked, I asked them to come and give their presentation and they can better explain what the FWCC can offer to us for assisting with providing bear-resistant containers. So, they'll talk to us in a little bit. And then, Mr. Russell Large with Inovia has some very good news to report regarding an FDOT grant announcement. So, I'll let him do that and next month I'll report on our projects and accomplishments we've had over this past year. That's all I have. Thank you very much and we'll just move forward now to Inovia's reports. Mr. Large.
Thank you. You should have a memo you can pack in. But to summarize that memo, the CDVG grant apparently is still under review. We spoke with Fred Fox. He is not aware of any issues and is still expected to be awarded. Secondly, our Fifth Avenue project is complete and contractor's pay request has been approved. The good news is that the DOT Small Communities Outreach Municipal, excuse me, Municipalities Grant was awarded. That monies, those monies would be available fiscal year 2018 and DOT would contact the city in May or June of 2017 to begin the agreement process. We have a project out for bid right now, the Fourth Street pedestrian crossing. That bid opening is October 17th. So far, we have three contractors, Dixie, North Florida Asphalt, and Winterfell out of Panama City. All the Sands Park improvements, we met with Courtney today. We have plans completed for the bathroom, the asphalt trail, gravel parking, fishing pier, and we discussed coordinating with Courtney to get those items negotiated with contractors and begin construction. City Hall planning study, I see we have an agenda item on that, so I'll defer for that agenda item. And then, lastly, the Water Management District Grant for Lighthouses Estates. We've coordinated with the district and provided additional information to them as requested and there, we contacted them today. They're still in the process of reviewing that, so we'll let you know as soon as we hear on the award for that. Oh, we have any answer, any questions?
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Large?
Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to review on the Small Communities Outreach Grant. That is for Toews Landing subdivision, stormwater management and roadway improvement.
That's correct. Roadway and stormwater improvements.
Will there be curb and gutter included with that?
No, that'd be a rural section project with digits.
And that's a $351,000 grant.
That's right.
And we've been trying for that for about three years now.
That's right.
So, we're just real happy to get that and we'll begin work with the FDOT next spring or summer. So, that's a good thing. All right, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll have your input regarding the City Hall planning study in a short bit. Thank you. Boardfront partnership.
I gave you all the copy of our report. It's pretty basic. This month, we, I guess you could say, we are continuing on to do the various projects that we've been working on for some time. I did want to report on the results of our coastal cleanup. We managed to collect just under 1,000 pounds of trash and I know several of you helped out on that cleanup and we certainly appreciate that. We were able, we had 19 volunteers that worked out of around the pavilion and 16 that were over at the beach. So, I think that's a very respectable amount of thanks. People even cleaned up the night before, brought in their goodies to put in the trashcan. And I keep trying to tell people, it's a great time to take all your stuff you've been meaning to take to the dump and put it in the dumpster. If they, if people, I mean, I don't think we need to, I just think it's an opportunity not to put your household garbage in there, but if you've got large pieces of stuff you've been meaning to take to the dump, go put it in the dumpster and we get it off the streets and out of the yards and all those things. So, we'll be doing that again. This is our September 1, we do another one in the spring, you see right before Riverfront Festival in April. So, maybe we can use it. We did get a sign this year and I think that was helpful for people to know kind of what we were doing, that people come by, they're surprised, but they get to help us do that. The other new thing that we have is that the Environmental Committee prepared a grant to FWCC for a gopher's, gopher, tortoise habitat management. We've been trying to get that set up up at Patton Park for quite some time, but we were not chosen for the funding again this year. But we submitted it and tried for it. So, hopefully, we'd like to get something done up there because it's a great place, the gophers love it and we got room geographically for several more gophers. That's all I have today that isn't just single stuff. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And then, the EDC, Mr. Butler. Okay, so Mr. Butler has no report from the Economic Development Council. All right, then, the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board, Mr. Sullivan is not able to be here tonight, but he did submit his report, his written report. Did you all have a chance to review that? They're working on the fuel tank relocation project right now. Courtney and I have been out there a couple of times to look at that. You had bids were due this afternoon for the new hangar and you received no bids on that. So, she's going to have to get back with the grant manager of the DOT to see how we'll handle that. And then, the airport tractor is, right now, it was delivered to Tallahassee, it's being outfitted with a new grabber. So, I guess that's something that grabs something. So, anyway, and then, we're having a workshop on Tuesday for the fly-in event and then the budget, they said their budget's going to be a great benefit in managing the airport for this next year and reaching their goal of being totally financially self-sufficient. All right, do y'all have any questions for Courtney on this report from the Airport Advisory Board? Mr. Hartman, do you have anything?
I do. I do, just, I can briefly run through the results from the P&amp;Z meeting that we had, the issues in front of the P&amp;Z board and if one of them, they come up here tonight. Actually, would you like me to brief you on the relation to those?
Yeah, we'll do that when we, I'll ask you.
Okay.
And address those items.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hartman? Ms. Courtney, do you have anything to report on? And Ms. Keisha, do you have anything?
Yeah, I've got a few meetings to announce. Tomorrow at 1:00, we'll have a special meeting for, it'll be the first reading of an ordinance regarding the Sands Park, Tilly Miller, I'm sorry, Tilly Miller grant relating to the special meeting we had this morning for a grant application that we're trying to get submitted and it's got a deadline, so we've got to get these. The second reading on that will be October 17th, is that right?
I think it's the 18th.
The third Tuesday.
I had it wrote down.
Yeah, 18th. And that'll be at 1:00 as well. So, tomorrow, the 7th, and then the 18th, both at 1:00. For the Tilly Miller.
Does everyone have that? No, we need that, that's the-
Yeah, we need everybody to be here.
Yeah, that's two, it won't take but about five minutes. It's to update our comprehensive plan to include the Tilly Miller Park project. So, all right. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Keisha? Okay, then we'll move on to our public hearing, which we have Resolution 202016 and it's a resolution to authorize submission of the Firdat application for Tilly Miller Park and Mr. Hartman's going to read that resolution for us.
All right. Resolution number 22-2016, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, Firdat, funding to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for federal fiscal year 2017-2018 funding cycle, whereas the City of Carabelle desires to submit an application to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for a Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grant to benefit the local residents, whereas there is a present and growing need for outdoor recreational opportunities among persons of all ages within the City of Carabelle, Florida, corporate limits and among those visiting the area, and whereas the city recognizes this need for additional recreational opportunities and whereas meeting the increasing demand for recreational opportunities can best be met with the development of Tilly Miller Park Phase 1 as detailed in the application for funding, which the city is submitting an application in October 28, 2016, application cycle requesting $50,000 in grant funds. Now therefore, we are resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carabelle as follows. Number one, that the City of Carabelle hereby authorizes the filing of an application for a Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grant and the Mayor of the City of Carabelle is hereby authorized to execute all documents required in connection with the filing of said application to be submitted on October 28, 2016, adopted by the City Commission of the City of Carabelle, Florida, this sixth day of October 2016.
Okay. Mr. Hartman, the Planning and Zoning Board met on September the 15th regarding this plan for Tilly Miller Park. What was their recommendation?
It was to make this application for funding and basically approval or recommendation that the commission put together.
Okay. All right, and then, Ms. Courtney, you presented this yesterday to Chamber?
To the Chamber. As a requirement for the grant is to present it to a civic organization and we get the Chamber and they gave us a letter of support for the Tilly Miller Park grant. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, thank you. All right, and then we just conducted an advertised public meeting to discuss the improvement suggestions and we did motion to proceed with the application. So, what we want to do now is authorize submission of this Firdat application for the Tilly Miller Park. Do we want to wait just a minute for Commissioner Walden to come to return or should we? I would like for him to vote on this. This is a park they use, he and his family use this park a lot, so. Mr. Hartman, should we recess just a minute here, a couple of minutes? Or Mr. Walden?
I think it's so hot in these days that he's had to turn on.
You can, but you do not have to, we have software on it.
All right, well, let me see, Ms. Lucille's taking a look now.
Chief, honey, do you want to go flick the air conditioner on? You want to go flick the air conditioner?
It's hot in here.
I'm waiting here and I'm right, but it needs to cut back on.
Yes, Mr. Butler?
I noticed some dead time, you know, being a big Phil, so I've come forward. We do need more people on the EDC committee and we're looking to get some more people participate, it's about three of us this show, man.
Do you want to, you shouldn't come up here. We could ask to-
Just inform the-
An ad, would you like an advertisement?
No.
We did that for the P&amp;Z.
That's okay. But also, I'd like to thank the city for supporting us for the 10th Annual Smithsonian Magazine National Museum Day. We had our highest attendance in the museum of any September that we've had before and we had our groundbreaking at 4:00, which Mayor LaHass and Commissioner Allen participated with us and we do appreciate your presence.
We appreciate you asking us. It's an honor to be there.
Yes, go ahead, please. May I get a term?
Excuse me.
Are you hot? It's warm. So, we want to go ahead and motion on submitting this application for Tilly Miller. So, can I have a motion to authorize this application, Firdat?
I'll make a motion to submit the Firdat application for Tilly Miller Park.
May we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. All right, then we'll move on forward to new business and item number one under new business is discussion and possible action regarding the FWCC funding opportunity to reduce human-bear conflicts. And Courtney and I went last Thursday and met with Captain Wood and biologist Caitlin Goud and Lieutenant Nick Price on September the 29th. So, we, like I said earlier, we asked them to come and just give us a brief review of the proposals that they had. You all received a week ago or maybe longer all of the proposals, so we just, if you want to go ahead and talk to us about what we discussed there in your offices. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. I'm Kayla Guedon, the area bear biologist, so my sole responsibility is responding to human-bear conflict and coordinating response from Leon County all the way over to Bay County. But I am stationed here in Franklin County at Old East Point, so this place is very special to me. But FWCC has $825,000 in grant money to work with local communities, cities and counties on getting bear-resistant equipment out. I know that Franklin County, through Waste Pro, you can get bear-proof, bear-resistant trashcans, not always bear-proof, but we're just hoping to partner with the City of Carabelle and Franklin County on any type of grant, any type of project that you guys want that would help reduce the conflict in your city. What we had spoke about was retrofit kits, which are gate pasps and clips that you can screw on the garbage cans and it slows the bear sound quite a bit and Waste Pro will pick them up without any additional fee to your service. So, that would be just for people with Waste Pro. But if you guys have any questions, I can, if there's anything else you want me to elaborate on?
Well, if you would, you know, tell us about the retrofit kits and then we discussed what would be the, you would, someone would help us with the grant application?
Yes.
You said it's a simple application?
Yes, yes.
And then, what would be the city's match on that?
Yeah, so FWCC is asking for a match, but it does not have to be monetary, it can be in kind, so the city either hosts an event- in kind, so the city either hosts an event where people bring their trash cans, and we have volunteers that screw the gate hasps, put kits on the garbage cans, and then anything that we didn't give out that day, we can talk about leaving at City Hall, people come in, show their IDs, and say they live in the City of Carabel, and they can get a kit to take home. And that's, as simple as that, it can be your match to FWC's funding, and the kits run, you know, you can, depending on how big and bulk you get them, you can get them for $10 a kit, $10, $15 a kit, and FWC would pay for that portion of it, and you guys would just have to be responsible for passing them out. Captain Wood and I were more than happy to help organize and put them on, we've gotten pretty good at screwing the gate hasps onto people's garbage cans, so.
Well, I see a lot of people is wondering where they can get the bear proof garbage cans, do they get them from?
Through Waste Pro.
Waste Pro.
And if Waste Pro does have them, so make sure that you tell them that you know that they have them, be persistent with them, but you can also, if you don't have Waste Pro, maybe you have one of the local guys that picks it up, you can order them off of Amazon or Walmart, I think Lowe's and Home Depot sell them, you might be able to get Ace to order a couple in and sell them that way, but through Waste Pro, it's $5 extra a month on your bill, $15 a quarter.
But now, you have, y'all have, the FWC has discussed with Waste Pro regarding the retrofit?
Yep, yep, Waste Pro will service those without charge. Now, so I was saying, I think if we do the whole City of Carabel, and it really slows it down, people might have to unclip them the day of, because we don't want that additional charge. I think that's a limiting factor, it's a limiting factor for me, I don't have service at my house, I take it to the dump every other month, so, but you know, just unclipping it that morning before Waste Pro comes.
And so then, I just want to make it clear, and I did study all of the different options, and we met for about an hour and went over the different options and dumpsters and things, it's partial cost sharing, all of the items that are, that were listed here that were sent out in the documents, and the city, they understand that we just don't have a budget for that, and they don't have staffing to staff a dumpster site, and who would receive the dumpster, get to use the dumpster, who would receive some of the bear proof cans and this type of thing, so when Ms. Hood mentioned retrofit kits, and that the FWC would purchase all of the required mechanics for the kits, then, and what we would need to do is just have maybe a six-hour event or some published advertising, we'd have to, the city would have to pay for the advertisement, probably right here at City Hall, and just have folks bring their garbage cans and get some local resident volunteers to assist with putting on these kits, and we have two volunteers here, I would volunteer myself, so, and this won't happen soon, because the grant has to fund, and then the kits have to be.
Yeah, so we have the money right now, the application deadline is October 14th, and then they'll have a grant board meeting where they distribute the funds, and so with, you know, how quickly this state government moves in passing out money, it'll probably be a couple of months at least, so we're probably looking at the spring, Scoop are going to have to power through the fall with the bears one more time, and then in the spring we can hopefully get the money out to you guys.
Mr. Butler, did you have something you wanted to say, it seemed like you were?
Oh, no.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions regarding these retrofit kits?
I'd like to make a comment on the latches.
Yes.
I got one the last time the FWC was down at the Tilly Miller Park, they were giving those out, I installed one of mine, and they have never broken into it. Now they've, I've got holes in it, they've stumped on it, I've got cracks in it, I've had it drug out to the woods behind the house, but so far, they've never been able to get into it, it's just so simple, just a couple of clips, clip it off in it.
It really is, yeah.
It's very functional, and it's low tech, but it does the job. Now, my neighbor has one of those, it's got, you know, the really.
Commercial made ones, yeah.
But he had his fur spread out over the roof one day.
Yeah, there's a weak spot in the back that neighbors are starting to figure out, but Waste Pro will replace those, because Toter gives them replacement ones for free, and bears defeat them, which is good, so, so it's an incentive for them to make a stronger can.
Are there any other questions? Are, is the commission interested in providing, applying for this grant, because we would need to move forward on it, due to the deadline is 14th, and Ms. Courtney would need to get busy on it, working with some of your staff, if you think you're interested in offering free retrofit kits to the City of Carabel.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
They'll put them out, oh, they ain't gonna put them on, we probably have to get their houses put on.
Well, we're hoping first that they'll bring the cans to us, and actually, they can put them in the back of the truck, empty, I hope, and go out to the truck and install it, and not have to bring it out, but.
I have some gloves, which is.
Yeah, so, you know, we can start with this, and then as we get new water and sewer accounts, Renee can pass them out to the new folks, and just try to help out the community that way, and keep the garbage up off the streets.
Do we need to make a motion to?
Yes, we do, we need a motion to allow Courtney to submit the FWCC grant application.
I'll make a motion for Courtney to submit the FWCC grant application.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, sir. So we have a motion by Commissioner Massey and a second by Commissioner Mantis, is there any more discussion?
Yes, this should be done just as soon as possible, because the bear season is approaching, the neighbors are calling and.
I know, I know, and I do have, I got a bunch at the garage right now that I'm slated to put out in Larnark Village, but I've got, my contract, you guys know Don Davis, he's the alligator, and he does the bear stuff, he comes by the shop every once in a while, grabs a bunch, so whenever he goes out on those side visits, he's passing them out too, so. We have some right now, but they're, we're trying to get them out at Larnark, because that was where the money was supposed to go, but if anybody needs them. And if any of your constituents have bear problems, please tell them to call us, even if it's the bear knocked over my garbage can, because I want to know where the bears are and what they're doing, I don't care if we get floated with phone calls, I've got to live in my house, maybe not.
I've got a.
Sorry, I'm messing up your procedures.
No, that's okay, where does the phone?
It is 850-265-3676, and that is the Panama City Office, I already talked to the wildlife assistance biologist, her name's Morgan, and then anything that's like, the bear lifted my garage door, got my garbage can, gets transferred to me for us to come out and drive there, it's the life I'm doing on.
850-265-3676, and then if you need help, or if you need a retrofit kit or something, or, and Mr. Don Davis, we all know Mr. Don Davis, he has a couple of.
Yeah, he keeps them in his truck, so.
He might be able to loan us or give us until we can pay him back the kids.
Yeah, yeah, it may not work, for sure.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Is there any discussion from the public? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. All right, very good, thank you, thank you. And I want to thank Captain Wood, while he's here, we'll be talking further about our City Hall relocation, but I don't know if y'all are making, so I just want to go ahead and give you a thank you for showing us around the FWC building there on Timber Island, that's been most helpful to us.
No problem, anytime.
Courtney and I appreciate it very much. Okay, so item two, approve, disapprove, closing Highway 98 for Shadi Shriners Parade on Saturday, October 15th, 2016. Is there someone here from that parade tonight? No? Okay, can, does Keisha or Courtney, either one of you, can you tell us about this, or what times the parade is?
The parades can start at 11:00, they don't make, it'll take but about an hour, so the parade will be closed from about 11 to 12.
Close Highway 98?
Yes.
Probably approve.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, is there any more discussion? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen to approve for the permit, and a statement by Commissioner Massey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. And then we'll move on to item three, discussion and possible action concerning a special exception to allow a mobile home in an R1 zoning at 704 St. Avenue, Southeast Avenue, Bay.
Where's that at, ah?
This is William Melton, and beside his.
His house.
His house.
Yeah, no, he told me the other day, I didn't know that was his address, though.
Yes.
Just as William Melton.
Uh-huh.
First of all, cut it.
Yes.
Is this going to, the planning and zoning?
Yes.
It has, it went through P&amp;Z, and it was unanimous recommendation of approval.
I'm by the motion, tell brother.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mantis to approve the second by Commissioner Massey, is there any discussion?
I'd say that's an improvement of the neighborhood.
Any further discussion?
Is there any mobile homes already in that block?
No, there's no, there's just two houses in that block.
Is that affecting the adjacent property?
You won't even be able to see it from the road.
It's behind the mini mall.
He was required to send out registered planners to 250 feet around him to the property owners.
We have a phone.
There was one property owner that wrote in, that for the planning and zoning meeting, they sent an email because they couldn't be here, that were against it, and then all the rest of them were, so.
Now, why would they be against it?
They did say, and they wish to be anonymous, so that's, I told them I'd pass it along.
Well, do they tell them if they pass, will they anonymously call you back?
All right, then, is there any more discussion, any further public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that one carries. But then, item four, under new business, discussion and possible action concerning a special exception to allow, to allow a residence in C1 mixed-use zoning at 205 Highway 98, the old bank building annex, the Gulf State Bank Building Annex. And then the P&amp;Z Board members also discussed this on the 15th, what was their recommendation, Mr. Hartman?
They're, they're, a unanimous recommendation of approval.
So they want to turn the old bank building.
What this one, what this one relates to is that at the last meeting, I think it was Mr. McCormick, when he was here, he's been staying overnight in the old bank building when he was in town.
The old Cooks.
The Cooks Insurance.
The Cooks, Cooks Insurance Building, and, and he was put on notice at that time that he had to apply for a special exception, because he was essentially residing in that building when he was in town. And so he did, and then came before P&amp;Z, they said, they didn't see a problem with that as far as the granting, they recommended granting a special exception.
I do want to ask another question.
That's fine.
Ask as many questions as you want.
Okay, is this saying we don't change it from commercials, from C1 to a residential?
No.
If they ever leave the property, then it reverts right back.
When we say reverts, it will not change the identity of the property.
Right, right.
It is used. Yeah, it mean, this is just a special, special exception to allow this residential use, which is overnighting in that property, and just as Keisha said, when that use stops, if he ever stops using it in a residential manner, then, then the next person would have to come in for a special.
That makes no sense, why don't he just stay there and not tell anybody?
He has.
He was, but then he told us.
So why, okay.
He's been there for three years. No, he didn't have to tell anybody, I got upset with him at the meeting, and told him, we knew he was doing it, and he applied for a special exception, so he's applying for a special exception.
So he can be legal, rather than just doing it without.
No, there's some, if you just, if we just don't even, no.
And he's been, he's been staying there in the, in that annex building where the Cook, the Cook Insurance used to be.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, he's, he's, they, he and his wife are there at that building, and they want to continue to use that as a residence to operate their business there at the, at the , oh, Gulf State Bank, they want to continue to operate their G, the Gulf Line Assistance Center, and I guess, you know, be look close to the, to the business or something.
I'm hoping to approve, so we hear going to be, I'm motion.
And there was a unanimous, you say the.
P&amp;Z Board did not, they, they recommended approval unanimously, recommended granting a special exception.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Allen, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and so we have a second by Commissioner Mantis, now we'll have discussion. We'll have discussion, now Commissioner Allen, do you'd like to have discussion? Is there any input from the public?
I don't understand why we changing it, okay, they said we're not, we're not changing it, we're only changing it for them, and then once they move, it changes back.
Yeah, Olivia, it's mixed use, mixed use commercial, just like this.
Yeah, they can use it whenever they get ready for residential, I understand.
Just to stay in it.
Just for the McCormicks.
Right.
Just for the McCormicks, and they come out and change.
Yeah.
My previous understanding of the planning and zoning codes, that if you have commercial, that's a higher use than residential, you have the right to use it as commercial or any use below it, but if it's a residential, they request that you come in and get it approved, it's just the way the zoning is.
And that's, for instance, the house that my husband and I reside in is in mixed-use commercial, and you know where we live, there on 11th and C, and if we, if we decide to sell that, if folks that purchase want to, want to use it as residential, they'll have to come and ask for a special exception to continue to use that as residential.
Yeah, I've had a piece of the same thing.
So it's, it's the same, if they, that's, that's pretty much actually it, so, is there any more discussion? All right, so, all in, we're going to go ahead and call a vote on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, so we have, all are in favor, except for Commissioner Massey, and the motion still carries. And we thank you all. All right, then, we're going to move on now to old business, discussion and possible action concerning relocating City Hall. So we have some new business, new information on this old business, since we, Courtney and I went over to see Captain Wood, when we got inside, we realized that this floor plan over there on Timber Island, FWC floor plan is a concept that is workable for a new City Hall and for the staff, and the staff have reviewed it well, and then we discussed it with the attorney, we were able to, Courtney was able to secure the floor plans, and had detailed discussions with Russell Large, our engineer, we did have a meeting, when was that meeting?
Two weeks ago?
Could be, I think two, we got it, it's here somewhere. With, we met with Mr. Large and his, Mark Tarmy on September the 15th, and we did discuss some preliminary making plans for City Hall, and where they would, where the City Hall would be located, and, and Mr. Tarmy mentioned that it would be a three-year project, and it would be about, we would need about 10,000 square feet, and it would be about three, $2 million, and Courtney and I weren't real happy with that cost and the length of time, and we, Courtney and I have studied and studied and discussed with Mr. Large, and we just don't think we need 10,000 square feet at this point, so we reviewed these floor plans, and you've talked with the original architect of these plans, sir?
Yes, yes, I did, the architect is.
The architect is Caldwell, out of Pensacola, and I spoke with Miller Caldwell, he's president, CEO, he also has a son, who they refer to as Miller, too. But I had a good conversation with him, about 20 minutes, made aware of what issues were here, very interested in working with the city. Discuss the size of the building, the current size is 3,500 square feet, and in discussions with the mayor and Courtney today, we're looking at around 6,000 square feet. He indicated that some degree of a discount would be warranted here if some of the work is already done with, with the plans are already issued of this building. I mentioned that we would schedule a conference call with him at some point next week and he's available to begin the dialogue. Did I answer your question?
Yes, so do you all have any questions at this moment for Mr. Large? Go ahead and review these plans. What our suggestions would be is to make this building a rectangle, about 70 by 80, somewhere in that, it depends on what it's going to be per square foot, so that we can just have a standard hip roof and not these more expensive style roofs. Now, Captain Wood did tell us that this building, as it sits with all of the landscaping, the parking lot, the outside light fixtures, this big train generator, two large air conditioners that sit on the other side of the generator, and this is a law enforcement style building, so it's secure, it has a large evidence room, it has another smaller room that they keep their ammunition and guns in, so it's a secure building. And it was $1 million to do this building, so that's more in our price range with a possible discount because the basic set of plans, you know, are already done. There would be a few modifications, we would have to add an extra set of restrooms for the public meeting room on the back side, there's this covered porch on the back side, this would be, and the roof is still there, this would be closed in to help expand out to make the meeting room larger, put larger, a larger door on the back, the public could enter from the back for the meeting room and not have to come all the way through City Hall. We've asked Captain Wood, he's busy right now, he told us before the meeting, he's busy getting folks assigned over on the East Coast to get ready to help with the cleanup over there, but after all of that is passed by, he's going to have us come back out with Chief Hunting so that he can make sure that this is something the police department can use one half of it, and Keisha, to make sure this is something that, you know, that she feels like she'd be comfortable with. And we just, the main thing we need to do is figure out exactly where we're going to put it, I noticed on your report you have, you put Tamara Allen Park. We're not, we're still, we're still in limbo, but that's what we're thinking, you know, it's going to be, you're going to have to raise it up to base blood elevation, no matter where you go, this one's raised here, so. Do you all have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Pick this architect, will the construction be bitted out?
Oh.
Absolutely.
Most certainly, all phases.
That's right.
Be bitted out.
Yes. Absolutely.
It would be definite, every, the electrical work would be bitted, the plumbing, the roof, everything.
All of that, yes, the site work, parking lot, everything.
Yes, sir, it's a major project, so it's, this is a major, serious project. Has, since Ms. Tamara, when was the Justice Building built, the old Carabelle City Hall?
In 1933.
And that was built for a Carabelle City Hall, or was it built for something else?
No, it was built strictly as a new City Hall.
And so the city has not had a new City Hall since then?
Right.
So this is, this is a major step for us, we've discussed with the staff I have and with Mr. Large that what we would do is on one of these outside, now this side has all the evidence rooms, that would be for the police department side, on this side we'd take, have one of the offices with a header built in, with a, maybe a double wide door, but enclosed and still with the windows like it should be on each side, where the header would be for future expansion, where you build a breezeway, and then on this side you would build future commission chambers. And then if you had to expand for larger staff, then you'd use this area that had been used as commission chambers to make offices, and you'd have restrooms that you, you know, you had for the commission and that the staff could use. A commission chamber wouldn't be nearly as expensive as building this, the original building, so it would just be chambers.
A big room.
Yeah, a big room with restrooms. This room does have a large breakout meeting room, we need to make arrangements for records room, so that's where we would, you know, expand out and then enclose the covered porch.
I was going to suggest the next step would be at the old water plant property, take that footprint with the increase in size, and go ahead and produce a conceptual plan so that we can understand the best placement for the building, how much parking would be available, can we work in a drive-through for utility payments, those type elements related to the site, but I think that would be a good next step.
Russell, do you think, just suggest why, that you could coordinate with Thurman on that?
Yes.
To get, so we got a, so layout and a topo?
Yes, definitely, definitely need to, there is some relief on that property, and also some wetland area on that property, so we do need to have those located and incorporated into the plan. We generally know where those features are, I think as a first broad brush, concept plan, we can provide that on an aerial map.
And I want then to address the drive-through that you mentioned, staff at this point doesn't, they don't believe they need a drive-through at this point, but that's something that could be maybe built in as well, an opening with the, on this side of the building where we could expand to make a drive-through in the future.
Okay.
And how does that sound, Ms. Courtney? Because this building, it is designed, when you come in, there's a glass window there, set up pretty much, have you been in? Have you all been inside, so I don't have to describe to you? Okay, so it's set up for taking payments and collections at this point. I would like to also suggest that Water and Sewer Department fund this section at least of the building, because that would be used with Water and Sewer Collections and Water and Sewer Records and staff, so, and if there's any other section where we think we can make some other department, but we don't have another department, so. Unless you want to write a check, Mr.?
The commission chambers.
Okay, who could fund that?
Well, they could have it because the, you know, the Water and Sewer Department.
Will you look at one's pictures?
Okay. The police department's under the general office, Water and Sewers is a separate enterprise, so Dan Hartman's mulling that over.
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Tamara?
What's the orientation of the, what's the orientation of the building on the property? And I've really got three questions, what's the orientation of the building? Is there any possibility of saving the actual water plant building itself and getting rid of everything else, like water plant, to use it? I mean, it is a pretty remarkable old building, and are we going to maintain the, down at the wet bin enough space to do something for Tamara?
Yeah, all good questions. The orientation of the building, that's something we're going to have to work out with the conceptual site plan, I think there will be a number of options. The commission chambers are opposite from the entrance, but for commission meetings, we want an entrance, the primary entrance to be into the commission chambers, so we need to think about how that's accessed from the site from the parking lot. ADA accessibility is critical at all those points of access, so we need to think about how it's oriented. In reference to the old water plant building, we did take the architect to take a look at that, Mark Tarmy, he actually, I believe he sits on an architectural board?
Historical architecture.
Yeah, right.
In Leon County.
Right, for the state, actually.
Okay.
So he has an idea about historic structures, he immediately voiced to me that that was not a historic structure, but he did say that the sign, Carabelle Water Plant sign, that is a solid precast sign, which can be taken off of the facade of the building and reused in someone, so I thought that was interesting.
Other than being 50 years old, I mean, it is 50 years old, what makes it not be a historic building?
I don't know what criteria he considered, but he seemed to be indicating that it was not a historic building.
I'd love to have an argument with him about that.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
But according to all the criteria that, and the master's like file criteria and usage and all those things, it is a historic, it's a historic utility building, so it's certainly an argument we need to have before any dispositions are made about them, but the notion of taking the sign off is an interesting one, using it for some reason.
Would we want that building to stay up there with the new City Hall?
Well, it certainly takes up a lot of space on the site.
Yeah.
It does.
But for Water and Sewer Department building, yeah.
And if you're, if you're planning on expanding or building something that's to be expanded, you're going to need this room, and so you would situate it, the building where you could plan for expansion.
I could say if it was a storeroom house or something, but not just a?
At the?
To make it usable space, I would envision that would take quite a bit of renovation to make it usable to current building code.
What is the dimensions of that piece of rock?
It's an, it's an entire city hall.
A whole city block, now does that take in that house up on top of the hill?
No.
Now?
That's not part of it, it goes over two, it goes over two blocks in the back over, if you go on Third Street, it's large.
Right, there's an alley that splits the, I guess, the center of the property, so it goes from street to street.
Got to be chopped down to get two blocks.
A lot of hill, isn't there?
It's not two blocks, it's just one, one through the block with an alley door over there.
That's right.
16 blocks, eight on one side and eight on the other. So basically about four acres.
About four oak trees over?
About four acres. So the sign could be taken off delicately and made into a display.
It could, it could be made to a monument type feature.
Could we use it as a feature in Tamara Allen Park, like a monument of some sort or bench or for belting of?
Sure. Well, okay, to someone else, the action items I'm hearing are, we'll schedule a conference call with the architect for first part of next week. And secondly, develop a concept plan for the property. Am I hearing that right?
Well, I hate to, you know, the main, the number one item you have to have really when you're designing a building is the location, I know that, that's the first thing, and you know, we don't know what's happening here, looking at the lot right now.
Where's this street?
On front of it, and then here's the park.
Avenue D's not cut through.
There's a lot of hill there, though, isn't there, I mean?
On the very third back corner.
Must take you quite a bit of that big hill.
The hill is really all those trees.
Ah, what a hill.
The house is over here, over here, but you're right on that hill.
It's basically the only problem is that we all, well, it's already purchased, it's paid for, we don't have to purchase property, but we need to, we need to understand, and so can it be a very preliminary exception?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, because we, Mr. Hartman, have you heard back from the letter that you sent to the school board regarding this building and our offer to take the Trojan horse back, Commissioner Massey called?
There's been no response to the letter, I can, they were going to bring it up, I told them that they could address it to me, which, they're being, uh?
On Mondays, I think, I think they have.
Either this last Monday or this coming Monday, so.
Second Monday of the month.
So it'll be this next Monday.
We really need to understand where, what their plans may be.
It would be cheaper to build a thing that would be to demolish the?
Well, what are we going to do here?
If the school board does not take back the building and we offer it to them, if they do not take it back, then it's still our, then our property, and I would think we still, we have to demo this building.
Don't make me come coat for show.
That's right, we can't, I mean, we, this building's been there for a period of time, just based on my experience, your all's experience with stuff in the city, we can't afford to keep it, maintenance it, maintaining it, we got it tomorrow, because that's expensive, so.
But the land that the builder's set on, that would belong to the city.
Yeah, that still belongs to the city.
Would we sell that?
We could. Now, the only question is, we could sell that, but again, we have offered it back to the school.
That's offering it to the public, you have the land, but you got everything that's on it.
Absolutely, we're offering it back to, the same way we received it from that.
Or anyone else that would really take it, that's a possibility.
You want to offer it to?
There's another policy.
Get us out of money.
We can explore all that.
That's fine, don't say that too much.
You don't know, they want this money, Trey.
So.
There might be another idiot out there.
Miss Willboda, didn't you?
May I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
We're in the process of resolving the contamination problem that's on that side, are the engineering wise, do you have to wait till we get a certificate of completion, amelioration, whatever they call that, before you can do anything on it, or if you're away from that corner, can you, I don't know if that's a factor, but we haven't yet received, I believe we will receive a certificate that it's been done and it, that theory does work or whatever it is.
That's remediated. Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that question. But that, that is, that, that is something that would be important to know because that could have an impact on the schedule. So that's, that's very important.
Well, and it's only in one specific, they tested all around that area, so it's only in that one location. So it shouldn't be a problem for the rest unless they find out that the water tank is still contaminated, but then that's a bigger problem than we got now. Okay, I just, I've been after the engineer every week to, when are we going to get a report on, you know, is it fixed yet? And he said that it's, these things take time.
Who is that, if I can ask?
Eric. Eric, Eric, Environmental Services, ESE. I have this contact Eric, I tell him. I've got two or three Eric's on me.
And to build on another site would be more smooth, the staff would just have to move one time instead of moving into temporary housing, location or whatever. And it would save time, save time, time is money. It's a big step though. And, and your suggestion of possibly we could have to end up demoing to, to sell the property or, or something along those lines, try to recuperate and return the investment of the demo?
Oh, if nothing else, put it out there, you can have the land, but you've got to take care of the demo. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Somebody's got their own construction company, might jump right on.
So then, other than that, then we have one main issue is, is the youngsters that attend school on this building that we don't want to, to put out on the street, youngsters of Eastern Franklin County. So we want to make sure that the school board understands and they're going to work with us somehow on that. Is that okay? Do we need to make a motion? Do we need a motion for Mr. Large to, to move forward?
I think he's working under that preliminary scope now.
Okay.
So we don't need a motion?
Do not need a motion.
All right. And, and this will be back on the agenda next month? Oh, what, what we do need to do is schedule a workshop. Would that be all right with you, a workshop for November? Is that too soon or just go ahead and have it on our city meetings going out?
I, I do think we'll need a workshop at some point. What sort of advance notice do you need for that? Reason I'm asking is, I, I think we should have a conversation with the architect first and, and just hear from him before we schedule that, that meeting.
Okay, a couple of weeks. So could y'all plan to send a workshop on this if we schedule for a couple of weeks? And of course, December?
It's just a lot easier for the public magisters to naps it at meetings.
I see.
This would be after the November meeting?
Yeah, I don't see an issue with going in and scheduling then.
Because then it counts as a public magus as well.
All right.
So you're suggesting to coordinate?
Well, it's easier to coordinate with everybody.
To, to schedule it now. So what, what do you, what do you look like? And I forgot to bring mine. Do y'all, are y'all, y'all have any idea what your, your November schedules would be like? Thursdays, Thursday afternoons?
Do we have to have them at five o'clock? Wouldn't have them earlier?
I think Keesha wants to go a little earlier.
Slap at one o'clock?
Kaylee's got basketball now, so y'all know how I am with sports.
One o'clock?
I prefer to be done before my working hours are done. Especially after our Thanksgiving game.
We could do... When it's Thanksgiving, it's given for.
Twenty-fourth.
What about the seventeenth?
The seventeenth is what I was thinking.
Seventeenth at one o'clock?
At one o'clock.
Okay, so Mr. Large, we have November seventeenth at 1:00 P.M. So we'll, we'll motion on that then. I don't think we have to have a motion for...
Don't have to, you can.
Okay, all right, then. So everybody has that on their notes then, November seventeenth, Thursday, 1:00 P.M. All right then, is there, is there any more discussion on this? Is there any more public input on this item here?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Question. Have you guys only considered one full plan for a new city hall?
We have, we have really looked around and we've been working on this almost two years.
Okay.
And time is of the essence.
Whether there's more choices unless you've looked at it?
We haven't looked at, at everything. And we, we have discussed possibly going over to stop chopping and taking a look at their building. But it's, it's, it's kind of an angled, built angled building which would be a little more expensive.
They don't have a police department in there.
No, they don't.
Apelatical, it doesn't have a police department in there, so those really wouldn't even, you know, be of anything to go look at either, because we have to have a police department in ours.
Police department's just a room.
No, it's, they, they said it's not. We have to have secure, how many secure rooms do you have?
We have to have an adequate room, we have to have a room for equipment where ammunition is done, locked up. We may not require a whole lot of room.
I was going to say, you just had that two, archery, you got one over there with all kinds of security. Just, just...
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get in to see Mr. Clint Davis. He's on vacation, I think it's till the seventeenth and I'll be seeing, I'll be going over there sometime this month.
Now, theirs is bigger than this.
That's correct. And this also, it's art, there's an architecture plan on it.
I'm sure. Well, we can, we can, do y'all want, do you want Courtney and I to go over there and take a look at that building?
It's a good idea.
Okay, and, and, but as, as Commissioner Massey said, time is, you know, we have, we have just been back and forth on this so long, time is of the essence. And we, we actually do not even have, what is it, an inspection? We haven't, yeah, our boiler room won't pass inspection. So, and we, we just don't know...
And our air conditioner's already gone.
Yeah, and the fellow, Mr. Jaddis, he's not cooperating with us anymore because he's, he's understanding we're not going to stay in this building. He thought he was going to be able to replace all the overhead pipes that carry the water for the boilers. So Miranda has tried and tried to get him to give us a quote on what it takes to get the boiler room to pass inspection. If it's, we're not going to be able to operate that this, this winter. Is that, is that what I'm understanding from Miranda?
I don't think he not operated at all. I don't think so. There's a fine so much a day operating the boiler that's not, has it passed inspection. The way that these are set up, because it's all hot water running through the ceilings, using, that's what's keeping them there.
I think I understand the dilemma, but from a citizen's standpoint, you're going to be making a decision, as you pointed out earlier, it's going to be good for another hundred years.
I hope, but, but what we're shooting for was fifty. And, and I was...
A hundred dollars now.
Yeah. I've, I've, and it is, it's a serious, it's a serious step. It very, it is a serious step for this, for the city and a major step and we want it to be right. And I don't know what to say. What do you think, Ms. Courtney?
I would like to go look at the fourth street building.
Yeah, we can get a hold of the floor plans. Do you know someone there, Mr. Melander, that can get us in there to take a look at it? Or can you get the floor plans before we get over, before I can get over there?
I'm sure it's all public record.
I'm, I'm trying, like I say, I'm trying to have an appointment with Mr. Davis, but I can't, I can't get in touch with him.
Is he over in the fourth street now?
That, that location.
Clint Davis is the operations manager of it. But there's others, plants out that you can get in touch with, you can just call the direct number there and ask them. Ask for the supervisor, some of you, probably Joey Toronto.
See if we can get in there.
I'm sure Odessa or Laura, somebody could give us a tour.
The door's open in there, exactly. These girls know all the ladies that work over there, you can go in and take a tour anytime you want. They're welcome in.
Okay. I'd love to go in. I'd love that.
Just checking up about whether or not you have...
And do they, do they have secure then evidence rooms for guns?
Yes, ma'am, they have conference rooms. It was actually a building that I had until nineteen ninety-five.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
It was actually a building that I oversaw, the building of it, nineteen ninety-five.
Is, is there a room in there? So we're trying to, we want to have something where we don't have to modify too much to save money.
We can look at it and see, I don't know what you're looking at to what you want.
Major thing, the hardest thing to find is something where the room is big enough for a chamber meeting.
Well, there's already a conference room in this building, which I would anticipate the city being expanded a little bit, being a little bit larger for public users. But there's a conference room over there now that accommodates six people.
Okay. And, and that's really, this room is too big for us. Can you, can you hold off and let us take a look at that?
Sure.
Okay. We'll see if we can secure the floor plans and see if we can get in there next week.
Mr. Bell, do you have any estimate of what that building cost?
Ninety-five.
Less than a million?
Oh, yeah. That was in ninety-five. That was in ninety-five.
Oh, well, it'd be double that now. At least another half.
All right. Okay, then we'll, we'll be in touch.
So what about, do we still need to have this meeting on the seventeenth of November?
I think we should go ahead and have it because we, we really need to, to move forward on something.
Well, can Mr. Large go ahead and talk to the...
You can, I guess, if you want to.
Because if you don't, they don't fit us back. Y'all can go look at it, he can still be talking to them.
We're going to need an architect.
You will, and, and one other building that's recently been built, you can use as a comparison in East Palm, D and R, it's, it's, it has a conference room margined up to accommodate the oven.
You got a one coin to dial?
Back, it's just recently been built, so you can compare costs on it.
Yeah, I, I would imagine it's, 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 it's right in the year it's time for a bigger bay.
Well, again, I know your time is, is tight, but again, making a decision that's going to last for a long time, you need to rush and look.
It's, it's, it's scary. I'm not, I'm not taking it lightly, it is, it's very, it's frightening.
Have y'all been in there, do you know how big it is? I would imagine it's over a million dollars, well over.
But again, it may be, but I thought that it is, if you're going to adjust it to what the convicts the city needs, not necessarily what they're doing.
You're right.
That's what the architects want to do, set up an architecture work, save you a lot of money.
We don't, we, we know we can save money by not starting from scratch.
That's correct.
So that's, that's the main thing, we want to have something that we...
Like I said, you can add needs in for whatever the city is, whatever the police department, fire department, the mayor, whatever.
All right then, I guess we're, is there any more public input on this item? Okay, then, is there any more discussion from the commissioner on staff? Okay, then we'll go ahead and, being no other business, I'll ask a motion to adjourn.
Okay. And Mr. Large, you are going to continue, go ahead with what your, your plans are for?
Yes, I will.
And in the meantime, the mayor, you're going to the fourth street?
Yes, and, and with, with Courtney if I can, and, and they'll, they'll try to search out the floor plans.
I would think it'd be wise too for the rest of the commissioners to have a shot at looking at it, not, not together for this.
Yeah.
You, like, like Mr. Melander said, you can, I've been over to the fourth street, you can go every day if you want to. You gotta do is go in there, Lord vote out one of them and say, help yourself out, don't go around. You don't maybe have to make an appointment.
Go in the front door, desk, calmly, he's sitting there, one of my ex-employees. And that's another thing, when you go in the front door of that building, you got an office sitting there, like you want your water and sewer with a glass wall, you can pick up everything right there, there's a reception at the front door, that's very good.
If any of the commissioners want to go, say, go on your own, you don't have to go to me.
That's right.
I don't think you have to ask permission, go ahead.
Sure. So I'm figuring, I'm figuring to adjourn.
All right then. Okay, then we have a motion by Commissioner Matthews to adjourn.
I'll say.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walden.
I'll go back now.
All righty. Yes, just in the nick of time. And all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.